Good evening. It is Monday, June 27, 2022, and welcome to the regular school board meeting for District 196. We are here at Dakota Ridge and our meeting starts at 6:00. We'll ask for a call to order and a pledge of allegiance. So would you join us with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And welcome. We'll call the meeting to order with the approval of the agenda. Board members, there are the following changes to our consent agenda. Under personnel, there's a few updates in dates. Under the pay rates for substitute temporary and part-time employees and termination and nonrenewal of probationary teachers, there is additional person. Under the 2022 school board appointments, under the other action, that has been postponed until our July 25 meeting. So those are the changes. So we will be asking you to approve the agenda as amended. So I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Cory and a second by Sachin. All in favor of approving the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. That passes on a 6-0 vote. And you might have noticed that we are also missing Superintendent Krieger this evening, and we have Michael Bolsoni with us. Michael is the Director of Secondary Education, and he will be the interim superintendent this evening. So welcome. If we have really tough questions, we know right to, we'll turn them to you.
I'll do my best.
I know you will. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll continue on with our agenda, and the best part, as you know, about being a board member is watching recognitions and getting to celebrate with our families and our students. First up tonight is our state adaptive softball PI tournament. First place Dakota United Hawks, and Brett Cudgasty will walk us through the Hawks and their outstanding win.
Good evening. My name is Brett Cudzadowski, and I'm the head coach of the adapted athletics softball program, the Dakota United Hawks. I want to thank you for having us here to be recognized for our accomplishments this past season and capturing first place in the state tournament earlier this month. The Dakota United Hawks had an amazing season that featured many highlights. Our program consists of 17 student athletes, three coaches, and a student manager. I would once again like to thank the school board for all of your support and allowing us to have this opportunity to be recognized by the district. I would like to thank our athletic director, Matt Percival, for his ongoing diligence to ensure that our adapted sports team is the best program in the state. I would also like to thank my two amazing assistant coaches, Scott Coonsey and Doug Watson, for their time and energy that they put in the program. It doesn't go unnoticed. We had a great season, being back to a full regular season for the first time since 2019, when we left off as season champions that year. We had a great team to defend our title the last few years, but COVID had other plans. Needless to say, we had not lost a game since our third-place victory in 2018. The 2019 season was an undefeated championship year. We went in undefeated that year, and last year we went undefeated without a state tournament to plan, and this year we repeated as undefeated state champions to finish off that chapter. If we wanted to be successful and defend our state title, we had to beat the number-one team from the north, the Dakota, or sorry, the Anoka-Hennepin Mustangs during the season and in the championship game. Fortunately for Dakota United, we have solid athletes, and our numbers are through the roof, as our annual Hawks summer program went throughout the pandemic and allowed us to continue player development for the past two years on hiatus. I would like to thank our seniors, Sam Gertan, India Jaworski, Charlie Henderson, and the MAAPI Adapted Player of the Year, who is in attendance, Alex Jorgensen, on all that they have contributed to this team. They are the core of our infield and our batting lineup. They're a huge reason that we haven't lost a game since 2018. They are outstanding leaders and great kids all around. You want to root for them, and they'll be sorely missed once they graduate. I also want to thank last year's seniors, who came out to practices every day, knowing that their efforts would ensure that our program would stay strong, and they made each one of these kids better in the long run, even though there was no state title to be won that year. Their support brought us another perfect season this year. I would also like to thank the parents of the Dakota United Hawks in the crowd to be recognized. And also the students behind me, who will step forward when their name is called. Reese Martin, Fiona Sitzman, Jordan Johnson, Jay Bama, Kayden Niedham, Liv Grossbauer, Sammy Johnson, Amisha, Chloe Shibata, Alex Jorgensen, Dominic Albus, Assistant Coach Scott Coonsey, and Doug Watson. Congrats Hawks, and thanks again for having us, school board. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming tonight. Congratulations. Congratulations. We'll see you again. Congratulations. Thanks for coming. Thanks for coming. Congratulations. See you next year. Woo! You can't hardly beat that. Next up, we'll turn to our triple-A track and field state high place winners, champions. We got Rosemont High School, Eagan High School, and Apple Valley High School. First, we're going to start out with our coach, Sarah Hatley, and she is going to introduce us to the Rosemont High School Girls Champions.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger, wherever you are. I'm Sarah Hatley, and I am the girls' head track and field coach at Rosemont High School. And I believe this was my 17th season, I think 21st at the school. First, I wanted to congratulate all of the groups being recognized this evening. Our district clearly has great athletes, coaches, and a community. We all appreciate the support of the school board and our administration. Just to tell you a little bit about our team this year, we had 130 girls out for track and field this year. That's a record. I think it was about 50 more than we had last spring, and so most we've ever had. Our team was first in the South Suburban Conference Relays. We were first in the True Team Section Meet. We were third at True Team State, first in the South Suburban Conference Meet, first at the State High School League Section 3 Meet, and then first-place champions at the state meet this couple of weekends ago. I would say that with all of the success that we had, there's some strengths that I think are necessary to talk about, something that really is something that all successful teams need. And I think leadership is top of the list. We have a couple athletes. I'll introduce them in a moment, but athletes like the ones behind me are crucial to a program. And not only leadership from athletes, but I think leadership from our administration, our coaches, our parents, the community, there's all a sense of leadership in one way or in another, and I think we're lucky that we have great leadership. Obviously athleticism helps. We have some really athletic athletes, and we're lucky to have them be a part of our program. I think something else that's really crucial, and unfortunately, I think this happens more on the girls' side of things than on the guys' teams, we didn't have drama this year. We had a great, we had a great group of athletes that just supported one another and, you know, did the best to cheer one another on, and we came out strong because of it. And then obviously, they're extremely competitive. They desire to be at their best always, and I think that that just drives them to be successful in the end. And I think something else that I need to mention, I think that I personally am really lucky that I have a support system of my husband, I don't know where he is, out in the hallway? Yep, yep, hi. My husband and my daughters are here as well. They're out there as well. And so I appreciate them. I appreciate that we have a track family that are really supportive. I think that I also need to make sure that I say thank you to my parents. My parents, I grew up in Rosemont. My parents live in Rosemont, and they've always been helpful, and we wouldn't be here if I didn't have my parents with us. And then I also need to say thank you to all of the assistant coaches. We have one of the best staff around. I would have to, I would say that to anyone. I think the only ones that are here tonight, Kurt, there we go, Kurt Bills. It's one of our throws coaches, obviously Jay. But yeah, we have a fantastic coaching staff, so it's wonderful to work with. Now, just to talk about some individual accomplishments, so come on up. We have the Cinemo Sisters here. You know, I would say some of our strengths that I mentioned already, but just to add to it, is that we have a lot of multi-sport athletes. Our program really supports that and encourages that. And so, you know, with that said, that's why we have two athletes here and not 11 that competed in the state meet. But to talk about what these two girls did, these two combined scored probably in the 60-point range for our team at the state meet. Ava is a senior, and she was a state champion in the 300-meter hurdles and in the triple jump, and she was the runner-up in the 100-meter hurdles and the long jump. She scored 44 points for our team. And then she'll be continuing her career at Iowa State in the fall. And then we have Maya Cinemo, her sister. She was a part of the 4x200 state championship team. Other members were Caitlin Ketterling, Shay Payne, and Jenna Johnson. And then she was also a member of the 4x400 team, and they placed seventh at state. So, you know, and also with these girls and some others, we broke five school records this year. I believe some conference records and section records were broken as well. And Ava broke the all-time state record in the triple jump. So, yeah, quite the career. So we will definitely miss Ava next year, but I am pretty darn excited to see what Maya can step up and do as a captain of our 2023 team. So thank you again for having us here this evening. It's a pleasure to be here. That means good things happen for us. So thank you.
Congratulations, Rosemont High School Girls. Next up is, so, next up is Rob Graham. I'm not sure if I'm still on, but I have a good long voice. There I go. And Eagan High School Girls Track and Field. Congratulations.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, pinch-hit Superintendent Bolsoni. I'm Rob Graham, and I'm the head girls' track coach at Eagan High School, extremely proud person right now. I'd like to do, it's my honor to introduce and a pleasure to introduce, we've got two championship relays this year, combined by six kids that took care of those relays for us. I'd like to introduce real quickly a few people that were involved in the process. To begin with, with the coaches, John Bennett down here on the end, and Lisa Langenhahn. And there's an important member of our team that's hiding somewhere over there, but it's Sandra Seder, our athletic director. She is a track enthusiast and really has a huge helped us and just provides the wind that we need to do what we do. Our 4x800 relay members can't all be here today. We've got Kira Kuschnyerek, Ava Leitenberg. We have Nora Shirven and Rena Asherman that are on the 4x8 team. More on them in a moment. And our 4x800 team was Josie Seehafer, Ava Leitenberg, Kira Waldrup, and Rena Asherman. Again, the 4x800 that we talked about ranks in the effort and the time that they ran was the 20th fastest ever run by girls in the history of track and field. What's kind of cool about it as well is that combined among the four of them, there's eight South Suburban Conference performers, 10 All-State awards that are wrapped up in there. And a cool backstory is that this team placed fifth last year, and that was nice, but not quite nice enough. And you can, there's quite a, there's a lot of work that went between fifth and what happened a couple of weeks ago. Our 4x800 in the time that they ran was the 17th fastest ever run by a quartet, a female quartet, in girls' track history. And it only ranked as second on the Eagan High School all-time list. So you can see between, you know, as we mentioned, with what Rosemont has been doing in all of the schools in our district, track and field is very, very in good shape, and we appreciate you guys for it. That 4x800, there is eight all-conference performers in there, nine all-staters, and that 4x4 placed fourth last year, and we had a little bit better day this year. I would like to real quickly do a shout-out to the first families in track and field in the South Metro. The parents that we've got, and some are here today, are leaders of our booster club. They also manage and lead South Suburban track clubs of variety. Reel is kind of a big one, Reel Track Club, and they're involved in that process. Countless other parent and athlete groups. So one of our members is Kira Kuschnyerek, and her parents are Tristan and Jerelyn Kuschnyerek, Ava Leitenberg, Sarah, and her parents, Sarah and Carrie Leitenberg. Nora Shirven, and they're with us today, her parents are Missy and Scott Shirven. Rena Asherman, her parents are Dan Asherman and Shashani and Andrew Lysinger, sorry. Kira Waldrup, and her parents are Carrie and Shannon Waldrup. And Josie Seehafer, and her parents are Lori and John Seehafer. I want to just pause for a moment, and we had a pretty cool event that happened at the state championships, and it's gotten more and more progressively cool, and I wanted to highlight it for just a second. As you well know, this is the 50th anniversary of Title IX, and what it means to our state and our team and our sport. And we have a picture of the moment that was captured, and if we could, and you can see it when you look at it there. The 4x800 team of Kira Kuschnyerek and Ava Leitenberg and Nora Shirven and Rena Asherman were called to the podium to receive their championship medals. The woman that you see in the middle of the picture was Sue Allstrom, and she stepped up to place the medals around the necks of our athletes. Fifty years ago, Sue was the first medal winner in the first girls' MSHSL sanctioned tournament ever. So Sue was placing medals around the necks of our champions at Eagan High School, and it's a memory that we will carry with us forever. In the chaos of all that was going on that day, I just don't want that moment ever to be lost, and it was just wonderful to take a look at how far we've come and the great opportunities. We'd like to just share with you, we at Eagan are so very, very proud of these young women, especially Kira Kuschnyerek and Rena Asherman, they're our seniors. And we'd like to especially thank the school board for providing the vision and support and funding to make these things possible. And our experience that we just shared via the picture is one of the cool things about sports and track and field, where it takes you and opportunities that you are entitled to if you're in the right place at the right time. Thanks for allowing us to relive these moments with you, and just it's a great time for us to be together one final time before our graduates head off and represent other places with the, as students and athletes. So thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Congratulations, Eagan High School. That is impressive, impressive. Next up, we have Apple Valley High School. Jeffrey Flung is going to walk through the boys' track and field individuals.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, school board members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. Well, thank you again for the opportunity to speak on behalf of our athletes and our program. We had a lot of great things happen this year, and to see a resurgence in kids coming back to sports was awesome. We had our biggest roster that we've had since 2014, I believe, and we were getting down into the 40s and 50s for a couple of years there. And to have a little over 90 kids out for Apple Valley Track and Field this year was a testament to our community, our school, and our support of the people that I'll be thanking here in a second. But again, thank you for the people at Apple Valley High School, our assistant coaches, which I can't say enough about, the time that they put in away from their families to give to our kids and our community is very, very much recognized here tonight by myself and the people that are in our building. Wendy Beckman is our athletic secretary. She keeps everything in check for us, and we really appreciate Wendy. And obviously Cory Hansen, our athletic director, who is in attendance as well. And the rest of our administration supports us with what we need to make sure our program is a functioning program and gives opportunities for kids. Here tonight, we're going to be recognizing two athletes, only one of which is in attendance. The other student athlete, the senior, Abdi Khalif, is actually in Kenya traveling with his family, and so he is not in country to be here to be recognized, but for wherever he is, and hopefully he hears this message. We'll start with Abdi, then we'll end with Dwayne Smith Jr., sophomore at Apple Valley High School. Abdi Khalif has competed for Apple Valley High School for the past four years. He has been an absolute anchor in our lineup, starting as a ninth grader from 400 meters all the way up to 1600 meters. He is a two-time state participant, being able to participate last year at the state meet, and this year he qualified in the 800 as well as the 4x400 meter relay. Abdi placed second in an amazing race with a time of 1 minute 55 seconds, a career record for him, and what a way to end his career. It was awesome. The race was, I know I'm biased, but it was one of the best races of the day. It was, it came down to the very end with some tactics that were involved, and Abdi was able to hold off a few other field members for a second-place finish. Like we said, Abdi is unable to be here tonight as he is traveling to Kenya. He is heading to Augsburg this fall to compete and to attend college and compete in track and field there at Augsburg. Next, we'll be recognizing sophomore Dwayne Smith Jr. He is a sophomore, like we said, and has made an immediate impact on our track and field team and our program, both as a competitor and as a leader. As a sophomore, it's a lot to ask of somebody that's 15 and 16 years old, but he has done it with grace and has done an amazing job being a pillar for our team as well as our school. Dwayne qualified at the state meet this year in three events, the 200-meter, 400-meter, and 4x4, which is a very difficult task to ask of a young man, and he did an outstanding job. Dwayne placed seventh in the 200, and he eventually placed second in the 400 with a time of 48 seconds .33. This is a personal record for himself, as well as a new school record at Apple Valley High School, which stood for more than 30 years. So congratulations to Dwayne. His parents are Stephanie Oliver and Dwayne Smith Sr. We're looking forward to his career as he has two years left at Apple Valley High School. Congratulations to all of our athletes, and congratulations to Abdi and Dwayne.
How excited. It's always nice to have a fan club. You got your brother out there cheering for you. Woo! Congratulations. Now, the other half of the Hatley team at Rosemont High School, we have Jay Hatley, going to talk to us about the success of the boys' track.
Sure, thank you. Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, school board members, Superintendent Bolsoni. I'm going to do, kind of do a purpose here. We're here to recognize some of our team accomplishments, but then also some high-level individual accomplishments at the state meet, similar to what the other coaches have done. So kind of the theme that we saw across the board this spring was there's a ton of kids that were out for sports, and we were definitely in that boat. We had 180 boys out, and so what you see here is a very small representation of kids that competed for us at the state meet, and we'll talk about them specifically and thank them for their accomplishments. But I just want to touch on a couple of things to kind of do justice to some of our very important key members that are not here. So we had a great season. We were South Suburban Conference Champions. We were state True Team Champions. We were Section 3 AAA Champions, and we finished as a runner-up at the Minnesota State High School League Meet a couple of weekends ago. Great season, great kids, great support, everything that others have said tonight. We had, at the state meet, we had 17 individual all-state performances by 13 different athletes. And so we were well-represented at the state meet. We had a huge, a huge group there, and they did very well. And so I'm just going to, I'm just going to rattle through their names real quickly, the kids that competed and scored points at the state meet, and then we'll focus specifically on these ones. So we had a 4x4 relay team that was second place, broke the school record 319-19. Cade Gilbertson, Jackson Ganzer, Ryan Mulrooney, and Miles Townsend. Young man who's not here tonight, he's a junior, Grantham Green. Grantham Green was all-state. In fact, he was third in the 110s, and can't even remember, fifth or sixth, fifth, I think, in the 300 hurdles. He's a junior. He'll be back again next year. We had a 4x4 team of Will Harder, Joey McNeil, Ryan Mulrooney, and Micah Byze, who is here with us tonight. We had a 4x2 team of Cade Gilbertson, Leighton Simmering, Jackson Ganzer, and Miles Townsend. Weston Ebner was third place in the shot put, and in the discus, Sam Ryland was seventh, and Hayden Bills was our state champion, and more about him in a minute. So we had a huge group of kids that had a great state meet and had a great experience, and really thankful for everything that they gave us as a program, and hopefully they had a valuable experience in turn. So just special mention to these athletes that came out tonight. Micah Byze down on the end. Micah is a graduating senior. Had a fantastic track, fantastic track career for us, was a member of our 4x8 relay team that was all-state at the state meet, and his parents are Dan and Liz Byze. Next to him is Matthew Whalen. Mackey is a sophomore this year who came into his own, qualified for the state meet in the high hurdles, and was our leading point scorer for the season in our True Team State Championship. He was a four-event competitor, and if you track points over the whole season, as a sophomore, he, by a significant margin, was our highest point scorer on our team. Next to him, we have Jackson Ganzer. Jackson is also a sophomore. Jackson ran on the 4x2 relay team that was fifth, fourth, and then he was on the 4x4 team that was runner-up at the state meet. Jackson plays hockey as well, and he's going to be a big-time track athlete coming back for two more seasons. Cade Gilbertson is a junior as well, and Cade was kind of the jack-of-all-trades. He is extremely versatile. He ran on our 4x2 relay team. He opened up our 4x4 with a 49-4 split, which is a really impressive leadoff time. And again, he's a junior. He's going to be, he's going to be coming back next year. So let me, let me back up one more step. I forgot one thing. Because they're here, I want to be sure to recognize them. Jackson's parents are Jeff and Stephanie, and thank them for all of their contributions and support of our program. Mackey's parents are John and Julie, and Grant, or Cade's parents are Grant and Lisa and Grant, as a second-grade teacher in the district, fifth-grade teacher in the district. And finally, Hayden Bills. Hayden is the son of Kurt and Cindy. Kurt teaches social studies at Rosemont, is a real key member of our track coaching staff as well, does an awful lot for our program. And, you know, maybe a little bit of special mention for Hayden right now, just because of the state meet he had in the second day of the discus. On the last throw of finals, kind of like, you know, in dramatic effect, he threw 196-2 in the discus, which is the all-time Minnesota State Meet record. He passed up two otter dolls in the process, and Max was the Big Ten Champion this last season, and Peyton was in the last Olympics. So, you know, to break the all-time state So to break the all-time state meet record, you have to then become the Rosemont School Record Holder. That's just how that scales up. Statistically, Hayden had the 16th-best throw in the United States of America, and he is the second-best junior in the United States of America. So just kind of a tip for the casual track fans to keep an eye on next year. He's about as high-end as it's going to get next season in the United States of America as a track athlete. In closing, really happy and appreciative to be the head coach at Rosemont High School. It's a great place to be. I think I said this last year, and I just want to say it again with this audience. Thank you guys so much for the facility upgrades that we've had. That is such a game changer for our program. It gives us a training facility that is fantastic, the ability to host and compete, and it just gives us so much legitimacy as a program that helps our kids be successful, and it really is a key part of everything we do. And it's a noticeable change, and we continue to be thankful for all of that. So thank you to everybody who was involved in that a couple of years ago now as it is. So we've got the core group of our team coming back next year, so I hope to be back here next year about the same time where we can talk about a championship. Thank you.
And there goes our annual celebration of Boys and Girls Track. Congratulations to everyone. It is always amazing to me. Some districts go by and never have state champions, and we have them all the time. It's just, hopefully, we don't ever think it's run-of-the-mill. So congratulations to all our students, our parents, and our staff who helped those kids succeed. We will move on to student, or special recognition from the superintendent, Mr. Balsoni.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Magnuson. Congratulations to the District 196 students who competed at the National Speech and Debate Association's national tournament, which was held in Louisville, Kentucky earlier this month. Mafaz Mohammed Ali of Apple Valley High School and James Idan of Eagan High School finished as national champion and runner-up respectively in the category of humorous interpretation. All totaled, 18 196 District students advanced to the semifinal or final rounds in their speech and debate categories. As teams, Apple Valley and Eagan finished the tournament as two of the 10 schools of outstanding distinction in speech and debate, based on the number of rounds of competition their students completed during the tournament, and Eastview High School was named one of 20 speech schools of excellence at the tournament. We will get a chance to meet these students and recognize their achievements at our next regular board meeting on July 25th. Thank you.
Congratulations. It'll be fun to recognize them. Our next on our agenda this evening is special communication request. If you would like to speak during a special communication request, you must submit a form at least five days in advance of our meeting. 10 speakers receive up to four minutes to share their comments. If there are more than 10 speakers, we do a lottery, and the lottery is conducted to trim it down to 10. Speakers may not allow their time to others, and we use a timer for public comment, and will remind speakers when they have 30 seconds remaining. We expect speakers to finish their remarks when their time expires. Speakers are also reminded not to share complaints about specific employees or make inappropriate comments. Opinions shared during the public comment portion of the meeting do not necessarily represent the views of the school board or the district. And speakers, when you come to the podium, please state your name and your connection to the district. Our first speaker this evening is Stacy Miller. Good evening, Stacy.
Good evening, members of the school board and Acting Superintendent Balsoni. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. I really appreciate you making time on the agenda to hear my thoughts. My name is Stacy Miller, and I'm a resident of Eagan and part of the ISD School District, and I'm also a volunteer with MN350 Clean Transportation. While I serve on the board at Dakota Electric, a local electric cooperative, I'm here today just as an engaged community member and here to raise awareness about an exciting grant opportunity to enable schools to transition some of their school buses to electric. There are several other volunteer community members here with me this evening who are also committed and passionate about electric school buses for improving public health, addressing climate change, and saving the school district money. A few years ago, I was invited to ride on Lakeville's electric school bus. Many of you have probably heard of it. The driver loved it, and he would tell stories about how much the kids and parents loved it as well. It was really inspiring. So this lone electric school bus was finally referred to as the Ice Cream Truck because it broadcasts a courtesy alert as it approaches that sounds like the song of an ice cream truck. It's quiet, comfortable, and importantly, exhaust-free transportation. Now Minnesota has a chance to go from a few electric school buses statewide to dozens through a new grant opportunity from the federal bipartisan infrastructure bill, and that's why we're here. Each electric school bus can protect our students', drivers', and teachers' health while saving the district thousands of dollars a year on fuel costs. And your electric utility, whether it's Dakota Electric or Excel Energy, has resources to help schools with the charging infrastructure, which is also funded by this grant opportunity. More good news is that the application is straightforward. The deadline is August 19th in order to be considered for the purchase of electric school buses at a deep discount. And if ISD 196 is selected, you'll have until October of 2024 to complete the purchase or change your mind if you ultimately decide it just isn't for you. Electric school buses today give us the opportunity to reduce students' exposure to the familiar, smelly, harmful diesel exhaust that have been shown to cause health consequences and even impact student achievement. We all know and appreciate that schools work hard to be a safe place for kids to learn and grow, and electric school buses are a new tool to make it easier for the district to deliver on that promise. So I'm speaking tonight about, and with the support from other members of MN350 team, to ask you to apply and to plan to integrate electric school buses into our fleet for our kids, our drivers, our community. We ask that you and your transportation leadership review the EPA's Clean Bus Program, where you'll find information about the benefits of electric buses and how to apply for rebates that can largely fund new electric school buses for our district. We urge you to make public ISD 196 plans to provide cleaner, healthier, and safer electric school bus transportation for our students and community, and to publicly disclose if you will be applying. While it is a rebate program, applicants will not have to come up with money upfront. The funds will be dispersed upon purchase order, not receipt of the bus. So they do not, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. I'll wrap up. So you don't need to have money upfront. The EPA application process is simple and straightforward, and even schools that haven't yet applied for federal funds should be able to manage the process. There are local community members here today because we have a limited-time chance to basically get an electric bus and charger at a deeply discounted cost, and we're excited for ISD 196 to have the chance to own a new electric school bus.
Perfect.
This is a win-win opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your information today. Our next speaker is Nicole Qualley. Oh, you don't have to hurry.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me. So for the sake of my time limit, I'm going to speak very quickly. So anybody who's an English language learner, hard of hearing, or you don't catch it, you can find me later. I'm very easy to find. So I am also talking about the electric school bus. My name is Nicole Qualley. I work at Dakota County Technical College with their CDL program, the Commercial Driver's License. I also have a child at ISD 196, Eagan High School. So as Stacy was saying, we can get the free school bus. I don't know if there's any reluctance to it. So I just wanted to speak more on the government perspective. So first, budget. A lot of people know that fuel costs are variable, whether it's diesel fuel, diesel exhaust fuel. So those are all variable. We can't quite guess what they are. We kind of guess, but we're not always quite there. They can go more or less. So with the electric, at least those costs are a lot more manageable, a lot more predictable, especially when the infrastructure comes in. So from an employee standpoint, when you bring an electric bus into there with all the school bus drivers, it's going to be like the cool thing, like, wow, I get to drive it this time. They could do a lottery, go union, they could do a lot of things. So I think it would be good for morale as a workplace initiative, and as far as the schools themselves, they do teach a lot about clean energy, cleaning up the earth, things like that. So with that, it's more of a real-time case study, and I think it's a very good thing. It's supportive. The kids would talk about it. So that's mostly what I wanted to say, but if there is any hesitance, I know a lot of you aren't making the actual decision, you're talking more with the transportation companies, but please feel free to send them my way. I'm pretty easy to find, and we can talk, and I think it's going to be a great solution because the future's electric, and we don't quite know how it's going to happen until we get started. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And we will forward that information on to the people who need to know. So thank you so much. Next on our agenda this evening is our consent agenda, and you'll have to bear with me tonight. There are many, many things on our consent agenda. So we've got the minutes of the June 13th, 2020, regular school board meeting. We have the school board meeting dates for the 2022-23 school year. We have the design of identification official with the authority for Minnesota Department of Education External User Access Recertification System for 2022-23. We have appointments to the Curriculum and Advisory Instruction Council. We have appointments to the Budget Advisory Council. We have gifts. We have gifts quarterly. We have grants. We have quarterly advertising revenue. We have Treasuries Report for May 2022. We have Summary of Claims for May 2022. We have Schedule of Investments for May 2022. We have Certified Census. We have depositories for the investment of funds for 2022-23. We have the Official Depository of Checking Accounts for 2022-23. We have Investment Instruments for 2022-23. We have Electronic Funds Transfer for 2022-23. We have Temporary Easement Agreement with the City of Rosemont. We have Personnel Revised. We have Pay Rates for Substitute, Temporary, and Part-Time Employees. That's been revised. We have Termination and Nonrenewal of Probationary Teachers, revised. We have Administrative Licensor Variance Request. We have the 2022-23 Audiologist Agreement for Professional Services. We have Long-Term Facilities Maintenance 10-Year Plan for 2023 through 2032. We have the Resolution for the Minnesota State High School League, and we have the Confucius Institute Joint Powers Agreement. We have a renewal of linen service contracts, and we have renewal of liquid milk products contract. Tonight, is there any items on the consent agenda board members would like to pull or have questions on? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Joel and a second by Bianca. Were there any other questions or comments?
Good job reading all those.
Thank you. I got through all 29 of them, and I didn't mess up very many words. We have a motion by Joel and a second by Bianca to approve the items on the consent agenda this evening. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a 6-0 vote. Next, we come up to items, we have no reports this evening, and we'll come up to items of old business. We have the 2022-23 preliminary budget. We've got Mark Stotts to walk us through that. Good evening, Mark.
Chairperson Magnuson, members of the school board. Michael, I'm not quite sure what to call you, but interim Superintendent Balsoni. Pressure's on tonight. I'm obviously standing in for Christopher, and I do not have an Ole and Lena joke.
I was going to say, do you have a good joke?
I know, I know.
He didn't give you one?
You know, the other intimidating factor tonight is former board member Bob Shutey is here in the audience tonight, and Bob was really good at picking through the information and always finding various typos or other types of errors that we might make on our behalf. So I got to make sure I say the right thing with Bob in the audience tonight. But I'm back here two weeks later presenting the preliminary budget that Christopher talked about, back on whatever date it was two weeks ago, and really, nothing has changed in the preliminary budget documents with the exception of some verbiage on page 27, but other than that, all the financial information is the same as was presented two weeks ago. Just a reminder, all funds were projecting revenues of $550 million, $803,400, expenditures of $556 million, $327,600, and a ending fund balance for all funds, $172 million, $39,400. So with that, I'd entertain any questions that you might have, and I'd recommend approval of the preliminary budget. And just a quick reminder that we do amend the budget, you know, as we move throughout the year, and so probably in the February, March timeframe, we'll come back with an amended budget.
Before we move into questions or comments, this is an action item for this evening, so I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Suchin, second by Cory. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Questions or comments from board members?
I'd like to make a quick comment, acknowledge how difficult it is to develop budget, but just wanted to say thank you, and I've been reading it. You have done a good job, so just wanted to acknowledge that and say, good job. Thank you.
Well, I wish I could take credit for it, but I got to give Christopher and his staff all the kudos for this document. Danny Duchene is really instrumental in developing the budget, as is Christopher, and the whole rest of the finance team, so it's really their work that puts this together, and they do a really nice job.
So thank you to you and your team.
All right, thank you.
Yes, and this is online, so if you want to look at it, it's easy to find. With that, we've got a motion by Suchin, a second by Cory to approve the 2022-23 preliminary budget. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a 6-0 vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Next, items of old business tonight. Jill Coyle is going to take us through two of them. We have Administrative Regulation 507.2 AR, Student Fees and Fines is the first one.
Thank you, Chairperson Magnuson, and good evening to you, members of the board and Acting Superintendent Balsoni. The first of the two items tonight is Regulation 507.2 AR. That's the district's regulation with respect to student fees and fines. As I described when I was here at the first reading earlier in June, this is a regulation that describes all of the fees and fines that we may impose upon students in District 196. It's a regulation that this board reviews annually and often more frequently than annually. Tonight, I bring you three proposed revisions to Regulation 507.2 AR. The first change is proposed to Section 3.1.2 to require co-curricular fees to be reimbursed if a student quits an activity within seven calendar days. The current regulation refers to five school days. The rationale for the change is that many of our fall sports begin before the beginning of the school year, thus, a school-day timeframe doesn't make as much sense as a calendar-day timeframe. Second change is a new $10 fee that is added to Section 6.3 for lost or stolen parking permits, and the rationale for this change is to address staff time associated with issuing new permits and investigating the reuse of the lost or the stolen permits. And then finally, terminology has been updated throughout the regulation to replace the phrase "free" or "reduced-price" school meals with the phrase "educational benefits," and this is a phrase that is in use in other district documents throughout the district. So this is an action item tonight. The administration does recommend approval, and I'm available for whatever questions you may have.
Perfect. As Jill said, this is an action item this evening. Before we move into questions, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion from Bianca and a second from Cory. Any questions or comments from the audience on our student fees and fines regulation? Seeing none? Board members? Did he say no? Board members, questions or comments? Excuse me. As you said, we went through the As you said, we went through this last time, and it all looks good. So we have a motion and a second to approve the Administrative Regulation 507.2 AR, Student Fees and Fines. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a six-zero vote. And I was going to cough about that. Next up, we have Policy 201, General Organization. We'll turn it back over to you, Jill.
Good evening again. All right. Yes, next up is Policy 201. This is a policy, a board policy that describes the school board's basic functions and duties. Tonight's proposed revision is to broaden Section 6 of this policy. The proposed revisions are intended to reflect board appointments to various school and district, sorry, school district and community organizations, and not just formal school board committees. So as I described at the earlier reading in June, board members act as representatives on all sorts of internal organizations, such as, for example, the Equity Advisory Council or the Budget Advisory Council. Board members also serve on various external organizations. These various organizations are typically comprised of many staff members, many stakeholders, such as staff members or community members, and not exclusively school board members. The current version of Policy 201 doesn't encompass your roles on these other internal and external committees or organizations. The current policy only refers to formal school board committees. In practice, it's actually become much more common for board members to serve on the broader organizations, and meanwhile, the use of formal school board committees has decreased. The proposed changes are intended to be reflective of our current practices here in the district. If the revision to Policy 201 is approved tonight, the administration will make changes to Administrative Regulation 201.6 AR, School Board Committee's Committee Descriptions, to eliminate those committees that no longer meet separately as formal school board committees, and to broaden the regulation to describe the role of school board members on other organizations. The Board Policy Review Committee has met and approve of the changes that are recommended tonight. This is an action item tonight, and so with that, I turn it back to the chairperson.
Perfect. As Jill said, this is an action item tonight, so I'll ask for a motion in a second before we move into discussion.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Joel, a second by Sachin. Are there any questions or comments from the audience?
No.
Nope, seeing none? Questions or comments from board members?
I don't have any, I don't have any questions, but I welcome this change to our policy. I think before, it was almost a little confusing how we had it organized because it wasn't how we worked in practice. So I love seeing that we're updating the policy to reflect how we actually work. So thank you.
Yes, here, here. With that, we have a motion by Joel, a second by Sachin, to approve Policy 201, General Organization. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a six-zero vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. We have no new business tonight. We have one item under other action items. We have solar power purchase agreement with Solar Connections Incorporated, and we'll call up Mark Stotts.
Okay, as you're probably aware, or maybe read in the news, solar is becoming very popular within the schools, and we're currently working on a program that I hope to have an agreement coming to the board very soon for the School for Environmental Sciences. But tonight, I'm here to talk about the Rosemont High School project that Calvin Kiesling, the assistant principal there, has been working on with several of the teachers. It is with an organization by the name of Solar Connection, Inc., and as part of this agreement that we're seeking approval for, there would be no upfront costs to the district. There would be no ongoing maintenance costs to the district. The solar panels would be located behind Rosemont High School. They would be ground-mounted. The agreement is for a 20-year time period, and basically, what we do is pay Solar Connections through the energy savings that we realize for that 20-year time period, and that's how they recover their upfront investment. Beyond that, then we also have the option at that point to purchase the equipment after 20 years at its fair market value, or we could renew the agreement for another five years at that point. So with that, I would recommend that the school board approve the solar power purchase agreement with Solar Connection, Inc., and I'd entertain any questions you might have.
With that, it's an action item this evening, so before we move into questions, I'll ask for a motion in a second.
So moved?
Second.
A motion by Corey and a second by Joel. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Come on up.
Hi, I'm Kate Reed. I'm a now junior at Rosemont High School, and I'm speaking in support of the solar panels at RHS. So sustainability and environmental protection have always been an issue in the back of my mind. Growing up, I have watched as our planet has unnaturally changed. In Minnesota, our thunderstorms have become stronger, our winters are warmer, and flooding more consistent. I'm 16, and this is the world I have to grow up in, a world that I don't know will be, will have a bright future. It is frightening and scary to be a youth and feel you have no control over what happens to your planet, your city, or your home. By allowing solar panels to be built at RHS, it gives me a sense of comfort to know that the district is taking a step in the direction towards sustainability and looking towards the future, and not just the future of the school or the district, but my future and the future of all students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hello.
Hello. I'm Vida Conitz. I've taught science at Rosemont High School for the last 38 years. Jackie, I think I had your kids in class, yes?
Yep.
I want to thank you for considering this proposal tonight, and thank you for the presentation. And I just really want to urge you that this is a win-win situation, much like the electric school bus you just heard about, right? There is no upfront cost. The district, over 25 years, will save like $300,000 in electricity because the solar has become so much cheaper. So, I mean, I tried to do this about 10 years ago. I had grants available, but I couldn't come up with that upfront money you needed to start it.
Yeah.
So this is a new situation, and as a science teacher, I can tell you, our students are concerned. They do want us to do something. They want us to be the adults and lead. And this gives us a chance for Rosemont High School to basically have 66% of our emissions come from solar because we already purchased 60% of our electricity from solar farms. This project would add about 6% more, so basically, 2/3 of our electricity would come from solar sources, greatly offsetting our carbon emissions. So it's really a win-win. So again, I'm Vida Conitz. I just want to thank Kate for coming tonight. I want to thank you all for considering this. As I kind of round out my teaching career here over the next couple of years, I really want to, I'd love it if this were something at our school. So thank you.
Thank you. Nice to see you again. Questions and comments from board members? Mark, oh, go ahead. Go, Joel. Did you have?
To speak to us. I appreciate the students' perspective and also a teacher's perspective, and just the fact that this sort of opportunity is kind of a grassroots effort from people within Rosemont High School to get this. It's not a top-down decision where we looked at it at the district office and found a piece of land and said, let's do it, and all this came, the opposite direction was brought up to us. And so I hope this, in addition to the energy benefits we get from it, we can use it as a teaching opportunity for our students as well, and, you know, give them some hands-on knowledge of the technology and the kind of the future of where we're headed on this. So I appreciate all the efforts of the staff and students at Rosemont who were involved in this.
Perfect, thank you. Corey?
Just kind of echoing, you kind of took some of the words out of my mouth, but they are really good words. I really appreciate hearing from the teacher and the student perspective, too. It's really good hearing that this is a concern to our students, climate change, because our students today are going to be the leaders tomorrow. So I appreciate hearing that. And then the other thing I really wanted, I think this is a great idea, obviously, but the other thing I really kind of, a little bit what Joel alluded to, I'm really hoping that, you know, as the solar field and industry is expanding, I'm hoping that having solar panels at Rosemont High School will have an opportunity for students to learn about it from like a technical and vocational aspect. So hopefully, if they have an interest going into that field in the future, maybe they'll get some hands-on experience with the technology also.
I know the companies offer curriculum to go with, you know, studying the effects of solar energy and so forth. And it is interesting, Joel brings up a great point. This did come from the school. I mean, Pete and Calvin called me one day and said, we're looking into this. We just want to make sure you're aware of it and on board with it. And so the work that they put in, I'm just up here presenting tonight, and we went through the financial information and legal review and so forth, but really, the work was done at the high school level by staff. So it's a good project, really good project.
Any other questions? It is a great project coming from Rosemont High School. Thank you. If I'm looking, I've got the plot map here, so I'm looking at where it's placed. Is, am I reading this right, that there'll be about 430 panels? I mean, there's quite a few panels in, if I'm looking at this, well, I guess it doesn't matter.
I'm not sure. I haven't looked at the, I don't have the specifics with me.
You don't have the schematics in front of you.
Right.
But it's not a small, it's not two panels out in the backyard. It's a big, it looks like a solar garden, like we would see if we were driving down on Highway 3. Nice. I mean, congratulations, because I know you've worked on this for a long time, so congratulations to keep on going and to find a way that we can do it with no upfront cost, and it's a win-win, and you can help spearhead it at schools. So congratulations, it is a great project.
I'd like to see solar farms on my lawn, yeah.
Yeah, right. It'd be like those solar farms down.
I got pictures of them, too.
Yeah, it'll be just like, that's what it looks like. That's why I was surprised it was so big. With that, we've got a motion by Corey, a second by Joel, to approve the solar power purchase agreement with Solar Connections Incorporated. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a six-zero vote.
Thank you. And you can expect we'll be coming forward with the SES proposal in future meetings. So we're working out the details right now.
Perfect, thank you. Board members, update. Any board members have any things that they would like to update this evening? Seeing none?
Oh, Sachin did.
Oh, Sachin, I'm sorry.
No, sorry. I just wanted to take a quick moment to acknowledge the very optimistic nature of our meeting today, you know, starting with the wonderful recognition of our athletes and seeing a big core of them that is going to be with us for many years to come. I mean, the future is really bright, continues to be bright for that. Seeing the solar piece coming in today and the wonderful optimism that that brings to the health of our planet, I think is another wonderful thing to think about. Mark, just before you leave, oh, maybe Mark's gone. Sorry. One of the things that I just wanted to talk about from a solar standpoint is not only being a homeowner who has solar and sees the benefits of that firsthand, I just want to maybe urge us to think about solar holistically. We have ISD 196 and the economies of scale and the purchasing power that we have. Instead of looking at, which is great on a per-school basis, it may be good to see from a system-wide basis, we may be able to get perhaps better pricing, and then let it be student-led, staff-led, but have the purchasing power of ISD 196 to drop that price, I think would be something to think about as well. And I also really want to acknowledge the bus support that we're getting from a state level. It's incredibly optimistic to see that coming on as well, so I wanted to just put officially my support behind that program as well. So thank you.
Thank you. And as Mark Stotts said, he was off camera, he said, "The district will be pursuing and looking at those issues on electric buses." So thank you. Any other board members with items they'd like to share tonight? We'll turn it over to Superintendent Balsani.
All right, thank you very much. I have announcement about summer learning and free meals. Our summer programs for students are in full swing. If you haven't done so already, check out opportunities for enrichment programs and other activities that are offered for students and adults through community education and our schools. For more information on summer learning opportunities and free summer meals for students, go to the Summer 2022 page under the About section at District196.org. Thank you.
Thank you. We've come to the end of our agenda this evening. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is July 25th, right back here at Dakota Bridge. With that, I'll ask for a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion by Sachin, a second by Corey to adjourn. All in favor of adjourning indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. We are adjourned.[1777.42]